It's all set.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
It's 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the April 1st, 2024 Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order for sort of business for those who can stand. Stand for the pleasure of the evening. Like to open up a public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna close public comment. We do have, as I mentioned, we do have a quick executive session item, so.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of middle school assistant principal interviews and assistant superintendent Spaziano and Shane Anderson.
Well, second.
Hello, hi. All right, so it's the same. We are in executive session. We'll be short, very short. So it's 6:10. We exited executive session. We held an executive session to interview the Eastline Middle School interim assistant principal Shane Anderson. And appreciate everybody's patience as we did that. We now move on to special recognition and we have from high school, the Allstate Music Festival recipients.
Yeah, and I'm not actually sure how many are here besides Will. Come on up, you guys. So let me tell you a little bit about what it means to be an Allstate Music Festival student. In order to be selected for this Connecticut Allstate Music Festival, students first have to be admitted into the Eastern Region Festival, which is competitive in and of itself. For that audition, students take one prepared scales and repertoire as well as an unprepared sight reading example before two judges for a score. If their score is above the cutoff, they participate in the January Festival at UConn and are then eligible to audition for Allstate. Audition's the same, but the repertoire and reading examples are even more challenging. About 2,100 selected students from all four regions went to North Haven to audition for this experience and only 584 were invited to participate in the festival. So this Thursday, we have eight Eastline High School students will be going to Hartford to rehearse and perform for this experience. Spent a lot of time preparing for this. The eight students are Ming Wan Dwan, who plays the alto sax, Adeline Anderson, who plays the B-flat clarinet, Jerry Peng, who plays the flute, Nathan Bergman on the French horn, Emma Clausen on the piccolo, Will Dumond on the tenor sax, Sebastian Grayson, who is tenor singer in the choir, and Campbell Posge plays the cello in the orchestra. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Uh, my name is Emma Clausen. I play the piccolo for Allstates and flute like other ensembles.
Do you play the piccolo at the Veterans Day?
Yeah.
So we're at the Veterans Station. That's awesome.
And I'm Will Dumond. I'm the tenor sax.
Will is also responsible for our beautiful trophy case in the hallway that was his Eagles go project. So congratulations to you guys.
We'll get a quick picture.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we got a quick question.
Yeah, it's one comment and one question. I just want to kind of highlight the fact that getting to Allstate is a real honor. It's not easy. You know, I mean, students from all over the state are competing and I I'll ask a question to Will. How long do you, how much practice do you put in?
Per day. I would, per week, per week, maybe.
Um, I'd say probably four to five hours a week.
That's, that's not trivial. That's not trivial. So over, over a year, if you think about it, you're spending four to five hours of your time on, on, on an instrument and practicing. So that's, that's not trivial. I just want to congratulate everyone who made it to the Allstate. It's an honor. It's not easy and thank you for coming today. And, and again, a question to, you know, are you seniors? Are you going to continue learning music in college? All the best to you. I hope you continue. Thank you. Excellent.
To be up higher.
Congratulations. Next, we have from Niantic Center, we have Viking Baller Award.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have a big group here tonight. We're excited for that. I am here to nominate Gil Galant for the prestigious Viking Baller Award. As the elementary principal at Niantic Center School, I have had the privilege of witnessing Gil and his dedication and commitment to enhancing technology integration in our school. Gil has gone above and beyond to support our teachers and students in utilizing technology effectively in the classroom. His innovative ideas and hands-on approach have greatly contributed to the success of our technology initiatives. Whether it's providing professional development sessions, troubleshooting technological issues, or implementing new educational tools, Mr. Galant has consistently demonstrated expertise and passion for the work. Furthermore, Gil has shown exceptional leadership skills and a willingness to collaborate with colleagues to create a technology-rich environment. His positive attitude, availability, and willingness to assist others have made a significant impact on our school community. I wholeheartedly believe that Gil Galant deserves the Viking Baller Award for his outstanding contributions to our school's technological advancements. Gil's dedication to empowering teachers and students, which we're gonna see in a moment tonight, with the necessary skills and resources that they need is truly commendable. Congratulations, Gil, on receiving this prestigious award.
Okay. Well, wow, we gotta give you this first. You know, Gil, I just want to share that to watch Gil be such a successful kindergarten teacher for so many years and later in his career, transition to a whole new role, may be even more successful is amazing. So kudos to all the work that you've done, Gil. You have made us a better place. So thank you so much.
And we want you to introduce your family as well after our picture.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And be sure, your wife here. Your wife and granddaughter. You gotta show off a granddaughter as cute as this. Back to grandma. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So one of the things that I didn't mention in here, which is something that Gil implemented, not just for Niantic Center School, but for our whole district, is the tech squad. And when we were doing this Niantic Center School Night, we thought it would be best to invite everybody that's part of the tech squad. Even though it's just the Niantic Center School Night, this is a district-wide initiative and we've talked a lot about district-wide initiatives and how they carry from one school to the other and what we do together. So I am gonna turn it over to Gil and his tech squad and they are gonna, come on up, guys.
So what we did was, come on over, guys. And we'll introduce everyone. What we did was at every school, we had several children who were nominated by their teachers or previous year's teachers or their technology teachers and we trained them in the, in the schools how to do some simple troubleshooting, like restarting devices, clearing caches, you know, refreshing the browser, things like that. So if you'd be willing, they'd be happy to come help you on your devices if you want. And also, we do have a short video of them working in the schools, if you wouldn't mind.
And I let the board know in my update that if they're okay with it, they can come, the kids can come over and.
Any open browser, they can come check your device and show you and tell you.
Want to show the video first?
Yeah. Here they are in action.
So your Google sync is paused, so we're just gonna sign you in again. Okay. So if you hit that pause, close it, and then it'll start syncing again, and then it will sync Google page, and then now there's no pause on it. Now, this is something that I wanted to tell my folks.
What about what you'd imagine?
I'm helping clear the cache, restart the computer, and upload.
That's nice to hear.
I think you're gonna have to sign when you get through, please. Yeah, you're gonna have to sign.
Okay.
It makes your.
Awesome. You enjoy that.
What I enjoy about Tech Squad is I get to help other kids that have a problem with their technology.
Um, the, my favorite thing about Tech Squad is how we can go around and help classes with computers and providers.
Maybe everything about Tech Squad is teaching, is learning new things about the computer.
Um, my favorite thing about Tech Squad is probably being with my friends and helping other kids.
My favorite thing about Tech Squad is that we get to go to other classrooms and we get to help with the, uh, help other kids and fix their problems so that they can also learn. Tech Squad, where we get to go around to different classrooms, you can go out of class and help other kids.
My favorite, my favorite part about Tech Squad is that you, we do lots of fun activities like do, like doing stuff on Kindle or whatever the thing is. Another reason I like it, because I have, because there, you can help kids in multiple classrooms so they can access other stuff that can be fun too, okay?
What's your favorite part of Tech Squad?
Helping the kids out with their computers and doing things I can do.
I like, I'm like telling kids what I'm doing and then like I'm pausing or telling them after what we do after, like them.
If you're willing to have them come to raise their hand, we'll walk through and if you want.
How long does it take? Is it pretty quick, Gil? You mentioned cash. I was thinking, I don't want to lose cash, but you know.
Tell them what you're doing. Come on down. Our hope is as these children get older, that they will continue to stay in the tech squad. Carry it forward as they go to the middle school and the high school. So as they get to the middle school, I'll try to work with them and Jen Burchell, I'll work with them over there and we'll keep these, this cohort together. They have been meeting each other over Google, um, doing work and activities together. So they already know each other, Wixi and Flipgrid. So they're already really, really helpful in the classroom for these technologies that the teachers are attempting to use, but also they are becoming a lot of kind of connected group. And that's what we hope to carry forward into the high school and then beyond. Okay? So there, those are the kind of kids that sometimes get left aside or don't know how to connect with other kids as they're, you know, older. So we're hoping that kind of nip that on the bud too. It's been great to work with them. I'm hoping to keep them on the next couple of years.
Yes, sure. Guys, hold up. You got, you got a few questions maybe coming your way.
I'll put you and I will say, I'm gonna, so first, I didn't know how to clear my cache, but I learned a shortcut to get there. Mine was like five clicks to get there and they did it in once. So so that was really cool, I must say. So, uh, you question is, so how, how do the student, how do, how does a tech squad learn so that they can be the kind of teachers to do that? And then I'll just ask three questions that you can ask. And then how do you, how do they have, where does the time fit in in school that they can go to the other class? So how that all works? Yeah. So what happened was in the beginning, I kind of worked with them in small groups and taught them the five, kind of five key things they can do as a troubleshooter. Yep. So like if we can't fix it, they have to submit a ticket. So what was happening was the technology department was getting kind of overwhelmed in these simple kind of administrative easy fixes. And they found like things were too slow or things weren't properly. And so we taught them how to clear the cache, restart, and we practiced on their devices first. Yeah. And then when they get felt comfortable with that, I took them into one or two classrooms, we meet, and we get it together. And then after a while, I sometimes send them, older kids, the fourth graders, you know, on their own. Right. And they help the kindergartners, whatever. What it is, is the teachers give us like a half an hour for us to pull the kids out. Okay. Uh, like, you know, during snack time or whatever, and they work with me for a few minutes. Maybe on a special project, a Google Classroom thing, special Wixi project. Then we go out and we quickly go look through doors, you know. Yeah. Anybody using devices, we kind of run, walk in, quickly clear caches, check devices, see that they're signed into Google and all that, we get right out. So within a half an hour, we can make pretty much the whole school, you know, a rotation. But it really has helped classrooms get to use the devices without having to submit tickets all the time. You know, for these quick, easy fixes. A lot of times it's just, you know, getting signed into Google correctly or, you know, syncing the device, stuff like that.
Yes. Just a technical question. Is clearing the history same as clearing the cache?
Yeah, it can, it can be part of that, but there's other selections that you can make in with it, with that as well. Yeah. We try not to clear passwords. That's what we try to be careful about. You know, we make sure that's deselected. We don't, but generally that's not selected unless you choose to do that. So we teach the kids to clear all time history, but also stay out of passwords. We don't want to mess with those devices. So they're good about that, checking to make sure. And they tell kids, we're not clearing your passwords. We're just clearing the the data. It's really clearing old cookies, you know, so that websites load faster and things go to new websites better, you know. Yes.
Sorry, I came late. So I'm missing from, now, what is the grade range of the student?
We have some second graders and we have some third graders and fourth graders mostly, the squad is. I did take teacher recommendations mostly, but I had some of these second graders in kindergarten and I knew they every year that I've ever taught, I had, I've always had one or two kids who could just do anything, you know. Yes. Even in kindergarten, you know, we start your pro vice board. So I, I knew some kids from my own experience that I wanted to start with and I felt that knew a lot. So I took those first and then I added kids that were recommended from classrooms and teachers.
I just think the implications for this are so important. Not only are you teaching them leadership, they're socially emotional and then making those connections, those to you.
Thank you. I remember when I was interviewed, I said I wanted to try it and the, and the people who hired me said you could, so. So, you know, that would be very useful for kids to make that connection early and really get that experience. So they've been a delight. Their, their favorite part of my day, you know, just doing that half an hour with them is the best thing I do in the day. Thanks.
You know, let's talk about tradition. And I know you mentioned that you want to continue.
Yes.
To the high school. So how, how will that, is that a specific plan or you're still working it out?
I'm trying to figure out, I don't know the, the middle school schedule as well, but Jen Burchelli does work with me. So we'll talk with the middle school about these. Yes, so. On occasion, but I, I work with Jen Burchelli who's there a lot. I'm hoping that at least I can go there one day a week to kind of work with a group and then she could work with another group. But hoping to keep that going or talk to the tech teachers over there. We haven't figured out exactly when or where that would happen, but I need to look at their schedules a little bit and my own schedule. And the kids who are in second and third grade would keep going and add some more, you know, so that it continues to grow.
That's a great initiative. I hope you continue with it. Thank you.
We love it too. Know me, guys? Thank you parents for bringing me.
Thank you.
Buddy, good job.
Okay, we're back. We have the minutes from the March 18th Board of Ed regular meetings.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th regular Board of Education meeting.
Second. Any changes or discussion? All those in favor?
So in the minutes, let's see, um, the student who received the Coca-Cola scholarship, is she the same one on the, I can't, what did you say? The student who did what? The Coca-Cola scholarship?
You have the $20,000?
Yeah, their names just spell different in the two different places she was at. Yeah.
Can fix that.
Aubrey Cabra?
Yeah, it's, um, 3C. She's in.
3C.
And 3C.
Or B.
Oh, I think, is it Avni or Aubrey Deb? I think it's Avni. Re, R? R. R, okay. So we have to correct 3C.
Wait, what was it spelling?
A V, A V R I.
R I or A V N I? I think it is N I.
I thought it was. Oh.
We'll have to check that, but I'm, I'm, I know.
Do you know?
We can look it up, yeah. And then we catch, yeah. So with that modification. So we made the motion, seconded with an amendment. So now.
I'm fine with the amendment.
Okay, with amendment, we're okay. Okay. All those in favor with the, approving the minutes with the modification for the amendment?
Okay.
I oppose. Please abstain. And minutes are approved. Now we move on to discussion action and we have Niantic Center School Principal Board. And that was a great.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate you guys doing that. Gil's done an awesome job and those kids are fabulous and they found their niche together and they've really done some great work for themselves, but also for our district because we need those kinds of things to help teachers and, and, and instruction. And they've done an awesome job. So thanks for recognizing them.
Well, I think, sorry, just to digress, but you know, what we're doing at the high school with pathways and stuff where you're real life experiences. This is real life experience in elementary school. So that's really, really neat.
So the second part of our agenda items tonight is a Niantic Center School update. So what we thought we would do is talk about some of the great things that are going on at Niantic Center School, kind of through the lens of the school improvement plan and how it connects to that. So I brought some friends with me tonight to help us do that from each of the goal areas. So we have Sue, Mere and Kim Hill, and they're gonna represent the high impact teaching area. Jill Thompson is gonna represent social emotional learning. And then Lynn Sullivan is gonna come up and represent DEI. And then I'll finish us off with culture inclined. So I guess Jill is first up.
Hi, everyone. And so as part of the social emotional committee, I wanted to share with you some examples of the things we're doing at school to promote social emotional learning and awareness. Our theory is if our school community implements common practices, staff and students can understand their own emotions, have respect for others, form valuable connections with trusted adults, and learn how to access positive strategies. We aim to include all staff members and students in this so that we can promote wide use of language and strategies so social emotional skills can develop and everyone will know that they're valued. After all, everyone should feel safe and valued when in school. So here's some examples of what we've done so far. I can't include everything, so forgive me a lot if I miss things out. And school-wide assemblies, this is a great way for the schools to come together to learn a common practice or concept. In September, we had Eastline Public Schools bus driver Valerie Higley come in talk about bus behaviors. And she's written a book all about that, which was a great video for kids. Since then, we've had Free Choose Love assemblies, which have focused on courage, gratitude, and forgiveness. And this brings the grades together because they rehearse and the school comes together with a common theme. We'll have one in May, which focuses on compassion in action. We have respectful behavior posters placed all around the school and Jeff will remind students about the concepts in his morning announcements. And every week he's been focusing on a different one. During these announcements, he explicitly guides students through mindful meditation. During these announcements, he explicitly guides students through mindful meditation and he keeps the whole school laughing with his dad jokes. The kids love writing these jokes and they bring them down and he can read them out. And this really promotes a strong connection between him and his students. There's a kindergarten class that are piloting play-based learning and they have buddied up with the third grade class. And my first grade class had buddied up with the fourth grade class to do book reading. So each of us meet once a week. And this is where really nice relationships have been fostered and it's lovely to see the kids come together and form connections with kids in a different grade. And many fourth grade kids come into my classroom every morning and they check in with their first grade buddies and they, they fill them in on their day and it's, it's really nice to see. We commonly use restorative practice language and circles to talk and share our issues. My kids will often say to me, Mrs. Thompson, we've got to have a circle, stop everything. And then they sit and they sort out their concerns and I'm not really needed much, so it's nice to see that in practice. We see that our students and staff know that they are important. They also know that we all have good days and we all have bad days. And the important thing is that we can teach them how to deal with those days and how to support their peers when they're having an off day. We've noted a sixty percent reduction in office referrals and we feel it's due to our social emotional practices. So these are many examples of what things occur on a daily basis. We really noticed is the difference that's making in our school and I'm grateful for you for listening.
Hi, I'm Sue and this is Kim. I wanted to talk to you about explicit instruction. And I think the important thing to remember here is when you say explicit instruction, we all know that that is not something that's brand new. Teachers have been explicitly teaching forever. However, maybe it's time to take, take a step back and look at explicit instruction in a new way. John Hattie, a New Zealand education professor, conducted research on high impact teaching strategies. Direct or explicit instruction came out with an effect size. Which is of a point eight two, which roughly translates to two years worth of growth. Which is reason enough to choose this as a high impact teaching strategy as a focus for our school improvement plan. Another good reason is that there are so many components to explicit instruction. Which encompass every aspect of teaching a lesson, from the initial preparing and planning. To establishing clear goals and concise language along with modeling, small group instruction, feedback, and of course the closing. When we learn from each other and focus on a component of explicit instruction, we become better teachers. Explicit instruction permeates all areas of teaching. Kim will tell you more about that in a minute. Coaching cycles tend to lend themselves very nicely to incorporating elements of explicit instruction. Many of my math coaching cycles this year have been focusing on problem solving or applying the skills and concepts students have. Learned thus far in the year to solve real world type problems. During our first annual math week, each grade level had their own set of problem solvers, which were literally splattered up on the walls of the school. Each student's task was to scavenge the hallways and solve each problem. Students were engaged in interacting with other students and their teachers. Even kindergartners had their daily math problem to solve. All based around my big stuffed meerkat who mysteriously visited them daily with another meerkat math problem. Coaches also helped to design, design explicit instruction look for tool to be used during the two learning walks. That classroom teachers participated in this year. One to a specific grade level classroom and usually one grade level above. And the second learning walkthrough was to the classroom of their choice, which I think they really appreciated being able to choose. Teachers observed the elements of explicit instruction and discovered takeaways. Something they saw in another classroom, which they would like to start using right away in their own classrooms.
So the school improvement team planned these two learning walks that Sue mentioned at strategic points to ensure they fell within the midst of ongoing professional learning about explicit instruction. The leadership team used Anita Archer's book, Explicit Instruction, as a guidepost. For the focus of our ongoing professional development. We also used feedback from faculty and paraprofessionals after these sessions. To plan other sessions. We addressed chapter topics such as the foundations of explicit instruction, designing lessons with routines, prerequisite skills and strategies in mind. The difference between planning versus preparing and vocabulary, which is our current topic. This professional learning took place on half days and during some of our Wednesday morning meetings. Because we wanted all staff, regardless of their role, to be able to participate. In terms of our twenty twenty-three, twenty-four literacy coaching cycles, more than half of our teachers participated in one of the literacy pilots this year and last March. Either the knowledge building curriculum pilots or the play-based learning pilot. For those pilot teachers, this often has meant that they participated in at least three coaching cycles, including math this year. The focus of some of the literacy cycles included literal and inferential comprehension. Developing student thinking through texts and writing, small group structured literacy. And in a play-based learning cycle, the kindergartners. And the teacher, the kindergarten teacher and myself, we learned that animals survive in winter in one of three ways. They either hibernate, they adapt, or they migrate, which we didn't know before this. Finally, Sue, Gil and I have been working in partnership with each other and everyone on staff to be more intentional this year with our instructional planning for students. We meet as coaches weekly with Jeff to discuss cycle instructional goals and analyze data to improve student learning. We meet as a leadership team to focus on school-wide instructional goals, commonalities and intended outcomes. And we meet with classroom teachers in by monthly teaching and learning meetings to think about all of the above. From a grade level perspective. Thank you.
You guys, appreciate it. Lynn Sullivan's from the E I committee.
Hello, folks. I'm here to talk about the major work of the D E I committee. I'm on the district-wide D E I committee and the elementary D E I committee. And the way that I have brought that back to Niatic Center School is through. We've done smaller things, but the three main things are a book list, that's a resource for teachers. It's not designated curriculum, it's not must reads, it's just if you are a classroom teacher and you're looking for something new that is more inclusive or more diverse. This is a vetted book list that the D E I committee at the elementary level has been working on for about a year and a half. We chose the books through the lens of mirrors, windows and doors. A mirror means. Who can you see reflected in the book? A window means you get a little peek into perhaps a culture. That you are unfamiliar with and a door would be what's something that you can take with you after experiencing this book. Where you're a little more knowledgeable or a little more connected to another community. Another thing that we introduced this year, thankfully, thanks to you all, we have access to Language Line. Which is a service where you call a number and you tell them what language you need to be translated. They have everything from, you know, Spanish, Portuguese, French, Swahili, German, anything you can think of, Mandarin. And then you give them the number that you need to call or you can also do it via Zoom. And you tell them what you need to tell the parent, they translate, the parent speaks, they translate, you get to hear what the parent says. And you can use it for big things like PPTs and parent teacher conferences. But you can also use it for small things, like one of your students comes in and is terribly upset that they forgot their sneakers for PE. And you can call up mom or dad and say, if you got a chance, can you bring the sneakers? And Language Line can make that happen. So I trained our staff how to use Language Line, which has been huge for us. The last thing that I wanted to talk about was a training that was done across the whole district and I gave it to Niatic Center School. About something called calling in versus calling out. And what this is, is a practice that you can use if you have an incident in your classroom where you hear a child using words. That may be hurtful to a particular group of folks. And you know, our tendency is to kind of squash that and say, no, we don't talk that way, that's not acceptable. And that would be called calling out and it kind of brings shame and shuts the conversation down. And calling in is a way to invite a conversation about it, to let them know that it's okay to have a discussion about it. So if a child were to say something, you could say something like, well, tell me more about that. How do you know about that? What does that mean to you? And after you've had a conversation and made a connection, then you can get to the part where you gently say. Those types of things sometimes hurt people's feelings and this is why we usually don't say things like that. But you know, it lets them know that like you're an open person and you're willing to talk with them. So we had some real life scenarios that we practiced with the staff. So that you can kind of go through these occasions in your head before you actually have to do it in real life and have a little practice.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. So I will kind of close this out with the culture and climate piece of this. We've been working really hard on this for the last few years and, and. What we're really trying to do here is, is include kids and parents and our community in our school. So I'm going to kind of, I could go through a long list. I'm going to go through some of the higher. Events that we felt we should share tonight. So we've had celebrations this year, student celebrations, including Veterans Day, Fire Prevention Day, Spirit Day. Our PTA has been really involved this year, a lot of different activities with the magic show, the bonfire, fall and spring book fairs. They did the ice cream social just, just recently. And they've really kind of changed the climate of the, of the PTA. And really trying to get parents more involved in the school. And as a group of parents, and they've succeeded in a lot of ways with that. In art class, our, our students discussed working as a group. And respect and teamwork and they created several cooperative art pieces that we used at the PTA soiree fundraiser. And many of our students' families and teachers attended that soiree. We actually as a staff bid on one of the art pieces. Which, yes, which Sue bid on and we kind of bid on that and brought it back to the school. It was a fish. Or a photo or a painting that our, our students did, and so that's back in our school. So thank you for that. You already heard about the first and fourth grade class that are book buddies. We also have a kindergarten class that's with third grade. And they're working on the K play, which is really cool. So you'll get, you'll hear more about K play. Coming up next year, we kind of piloted it this year, but to have third graders go down and work with kindergartners in that, in the K play has been really powerful. It's, it's really cool to see. We have guest readers, we had authors, parents, principals, superintendent, assistant superintendent, Holly Cheeseman. Was down there as well. Kevin Siri was down to read to all of our students during Read Across America. Week, which was great. Sue and her team put together a math week, which was hosted by the math coach and she did a great job with that. That was a tremendous amount of time. That all of our math coaches across district, a lot of time went into that. We're looking at better ways to, to help her out, them out next year with that, but. But we learned a few things from it, but it was highly successful. We started giving out gift cards to faculty and paraprofessionals during the meetings. So we went out, we got gift cards to Cafe Soul, which many of you know moved across the street from Niatic Center School, so we have a nice relationship now. They deliver to us on Thursdays. So if you visit on Thursday, you can sign up with Lori and get your food delivered. But we, we did that with Cafe Soul and we bought a bunch of gift cards. And so at the, at the faculty meeting, everyone puts a name in the hat. We pull it out, same thing at the paraprofessional, just trying to create, you know, some, some. Good times there and get people involved. And so then the PTA Ice Cream Social, as I already mentioned, was great. We've now have three parents invited to each classroom event, which has been great. That's up from none to one to three. And we just planned our field day and so we're, we're getting there with that too, so that's been great. We had an author come in who's also a counselor. His name is Dragon David Ursap. And he has a book called Papino, The Spiky Stoic. And it was great. We did an assembly, the whole school went. It was really about social emotional learning and trying to have kids understand that we can't control everything. As much as we want to, we can't control everything. And so there's some things that we have to let go. And it's done in a, in a, in a really nice way. And the kids really, I think, got a lot out of that. And so I'm glad we did that. As well. And then we have our fourth grade students working with the PTA and the art class to contribute to the front of the yearbook cover, which has been really good and, and we're getting close to that. And then our second grade students collected socks, made care bags for the New London Meal Center, delivered them on Valentine's Day. That's always a special thing. Christine Deshaun, Carrie Wise would have been doing that for years, so I could go on. There's a lot more, but I, you guys have a lot on me. You get the point, so. Thank you to my team. I, I love working with them. You saw all three coaches tonight that work at Niatic Center School. That's been a huge initiative that this board put together. That we finally got through, that we need to make sure we keep. I say that when I get a chance to come up here, but thank you for that. And all of the people that work on our initiative teams, on these goals, on the S E L committee, on the school improvement team. That put in a lot of time besides what's in school. I want to recognize them as well. It was not easy to pick a person. For the Viking Valor, that's always difficult. But Gil's done a wonderful job and he deserved it, so. Thank you for having us tonight.
I, I just want to make. You know how I feel about climate and culture and. You can't change climate and culture without leadership who believes in changing climate and culture. And clearly, that's a passion of yours. It shows. I know your staff love you and I know the kids love you and all of that makes it so much easier to do your regular job, so. Thank you for doing that. That means a lot to me.
Thank you so much, Chef. Thanks.
Caps and aviators. I have, I, I purchased t-shirts and pilot caps and aviators for all the pilot teachers tomorrow. We're marching them into the Top Gun theme song.
Oh, yes. You're going to take video to. I have to see this.
We are going. You're, and are you coming tomorrow? Are we going to have a, just like a picture like you and the fan? Oh gosh, yeah. Yeah, no, so it's, it's exciting. I love the. Make a big deal.
I don't think.
Aviator sunglasses too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, they're not like.
They look good.
The Ray-Ban.
They're not Ray-Bans.
The cheap version. They look good.
They look pretty good, yes, cool.
Lewis is modeling them last week.
Video recorded, I presume. Yeah, it's going to be awesome. Annalise, video recorded, I presume.
Yes, I will get you some.
I watched this today. Yep, it's happening tomorrow.
This is my push-up song with my students every.
Yeah, yeah, I have it all keyed up, ready to go on the slide deck.
It's going to be on YouTube.
No. No, but I could probably make a little video clip.
A little video, we just have to see it.
Yeah.
I, I need to see the. A little bit of yellow.
Yeah, sounds fabulous.
Yeah, thank you. We'll have to see it.
Okay, thanks for your business. Shane has been very patient back there. Discussion action item personnel. Proposed appointment of a one point O F T E twelve month assistant principal, Eastline Middle School. So, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the interim title and appoint Shane Anderson for the position of one point O F T E twelve month assistant principal of Eastline Middle School.
Second. Second, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted, abstained. Congratulations, Shane.
Shane has done a wonderful, amazing job and a great part of that team at the middle school that, you know, Cluddy and company have formed, so.
I just want to add Shane is a man of integrity, honor, dedication, over. It's a pleasure to work with daily.
Thanks, Jane. Thanks so much. Come on up.
Yeah. I'll say this feels kind of surreal because I was doing this three years ago and it doesn't feel like it's been three years. But I do want to start by thanking the.
But I do want to start by thanking the board for this opportunity again. I I know it's um. It's you know, it's it's a lot of work and effort on you on your part and making sure that you have the right people in place, and I really do appreciate the opportunity. I also want to thank Mr. Newton, Ms. Baziano, Ms. Davis. Um for all their continued support. I can call any of them at any time and they will pick up the phone and just answer whatever questions I have. And it really, really is great to work with. Um I would, of course, be remiss if I didn't thank probably one of the greatest mentors one could ever have, which would be Ms. Kelly. She. Really taught me how to be an administrator and and continues to do so on a daily basis. And I think we'd make a really great team at the middle school and um. I said this probably three years ago, and I'm gonna say it again. Eastline is not a place to leave. Uh it's not a place where I'm going anywhere anytime soon, and that's because of the people here. So, thank you.
Order of business, discussion, action, other uh discussion, action, proposed Eastline High School graduation date for class of twenty twenty four.
Yes, so we have the proposed date. We've done well um with the inclement weather days. So we had two um leaving us with one still in the calendar, which doesn't affect the end of the school years. The last day and graduation uh would be Thursday, June thirteenth.
Make a motion to set the graduation date for Eastline High School class of twenty twenty four to be June thirteenth.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained.
And just for the record, the middle school will be the night before, on the twelfth, Wednesday, the twelfth, same place out here on the turf field. fingers crossed, weather's good.
Contingent upon storms, is that?
Yes, always contingent upon the weather. Hopefully we'll be okay. Got a good feeling about this year.
I need I need a good feeling.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
We attend the graduations?
Yeah, we'll fill you in.
As it gets closer, we'll give you all the now that all works, but yes. For the high school, we do all gather here and then we all walk in together. Walk in together and sit together. I got bumped out. I got to do it last time.
You need a ticket. You need a ticket.
He's saying that Kathleen is not letting him give Eliza her diploma.
Oh, 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 I was saying you could act a guest ticket.
We won't do that to him.
Okay, moving on. Discussion action item policy.
Sure, there.
Not a lot of people do this job. It's like, maybe that's the only one.
Alright, so for the first in a series of policy items, the first one is a discussion. Uh information for first review of the revision of policy. Uh twelve fifty school visitors. Um so this is a first review and any um comments or suggestions submit to Jeff.
Any questions? Yeah, we might changes. We're not doing it in a different color or under highlighting or am I missing something?
The green not in there, Joe? It's the green. Oh, we put the regular one. And okay, well, um what I could do is I can collect them all and put them in the weekly update, so you can just see the green. Uh the the green is the changes. We we've had some language changes.
And I saw no changes. I thought, well.
Yeah, so I'll go back into the weekly update. I'll put those um. If you see, you have to have. Final draft as a first review and then.
Thanks for asking. The next um for uh discussion and information are first reviews of. The following four policies in the four thousand series. Forty-four twenty employee use of district's computer systems and electronic communication. Forty-one twelve point five employment and student teacher checks. Forty-one eleven point three increasing educator diversity plan. Forty-one eighteen point one one four reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children. Or reports of sexual assault of students by employees. The next group for first review are three in the five thousand series. They are policy fifty-one forty-one point two one, administration of student medication in school. Fifty-one thirty-one point nine bullying prevention and intervention. And fifty-one fifty-five student use of districts' computer systems and internet safety. So again, comments or suggestions, please submit to Jeff. But the next um is is a second review. We do need a motion for this one. So this is for revision of policy. Ten ten non-discrimination community. Uh and no comments or suggestions were submitted. Um so this is up for a motion to approve.
I might go motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion to approve policy ten ten. Policy ten ten non-discrimination community as presented.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion passes.
Then we have um second review and policy in the two thousand series. It is policy two-two. Three-six for retention and disposition of records and information. For this policy, no comments or suggestions. Were submitted, and this one also needs a motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion to approve the revisions to policy two-two-three-six retention and disposition of records and information.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed.
I had a pause for a second. I was like, oh.
Okay, so item F is for um a second review of the three policies in the three thousand series. Uh these um are policies thirty-one sixty for budget procedures of line item transfers. Policy thirty-two sixty disposal of obsolete or surplus equipment materials. Thirty-four forty fixed asset inventories. Um there were no comments or suggestions on these policies submitted. And these require a motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested revision of policies thirty-one sixty, thirty-two sixty, thirty-four forty.
Further discussion? All, oh.
I'm curious for the thirty-two sixty disposal obsolete and surplus equipment materials. What happens? Does does it go to bid or auction, or is there a sale on those or?
Depends on the item.
Cannot be donated or sold. The superintendent of. Designate may dispose of such items, but disposal just seems so.
Well, we always try and find a home or something, and it always goes to the town too for for their sign off and their check. Sometimes um it might land there. But um worst case, last case, you know, it's disposed of, but it's under the whole process.
And is there notification of that somehow that the public is aware of? Equipment that's no longer deemed necessary or useful and.
We don't notify the public in general, but try and put like maybe textbooks, for instance, who might check with like um a Catholic school or a school that might be a need. Asked, um that's basically, uh we don't, not a general notice. Public has broken items, things that are twenty-five years old. Um things of that nature that just aren't worth. Yeah, you know.
Thank you.
All those in favor, aye. Opposed, abstained. And motion passes.
Uh moving on to item G. This is uh for policy for one-one-eight point one-one non-discrimination personnel. This is up for a second review with no comments or suggestions having been submitted and. Is up for a motion to approve.
I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested revision of policy forty-one eighteen one-one non-discrimination personnel. In a second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. Bring us on.
I'll bring you on to item H. Uh these are three policies in the five thousand series. And these are a second review for five-one-one-eight now resident students. Five-one-four-eight point four-one non-discrimination students and five-one-one-two admission to public school at or before age five. These um have not had comments or suggestions submitted, and they are up for a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revision of policies fifty-one eighteen, fifty-one forty-five point four-one, fifty-one twelve as presented.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion passes. Thanks, Elise.
I have a question regarding that last one. Has there been instance or concerns about? Um graphic written electronic communications that are harmful or humiliating for protective classes? How are we doing as far as that's concerned?
I think it's just preparing and making sure that we have the most up to the policy to address it if it does, if it does occur. But no, it's not something that regularly. Regularly happens.
I know neighboring districts have made it made recent notes of. Things like swastikas in bathrooms and that sort of thing. So, you know, it's out there. Just.
And the importance of having the right, you know, an updated documentation of how we address it following policy.
Thank you.
That closes our discussion action items. Moving on to board comments and future agenda items. I just have one quick one is I do want to thank the administration and maybe a little specifically Mariana. I thought the. Presentation to the Board of Selectmen and then Board of Finance on our budget. It's probably one of the best that we've had um since I've been on the board at least that I thought. You know, we formed a good relationship. Uh with with the town, and I know more on providing the information so time when they have questions and questions and questions, but. You know, they get their responses very quickly, which builds a trust that we know what we're doing with our numbers and everything and and appreciate. Um know the work that we did in the administration. So. Do want to thank, because I thought that went real well.
Liberations are tomorrow night. So we'll see how that. It is tomorrow night, yes. Yeah, if you're if you're available, yeah, I mean, you're welcome to. Tonight is five-thirty at Town Hall. Uh and they're deliberating on all the budgets and Thursday is a backup in case they need Thursday night for a further discussion.
They're definitely doing the.
They'll that will be incorporated in tomorrow. I just don't know when I'm up. Can do so with the schedule.
When will they let us know? When we'll like the agenda and the order of. When that like, I'm just trying to get, because sometimes. I know I've gone before and they do the town and they go through every one in the town, and I'm there for an hour and a half before they touched a board of that.
They, I I didn't, this was the last week. I don't know if they knew the specific order, that they were still kind of putting it together um as I wasn't provided that, but I can. Check um tomorrow. Order. It's not on the agenda. Check the agenda. Um it's it's just, you know, budget deliberations is the the title. Well, let me see if um. Where they think or what they're starting with.
Yeah.
And then I can let you know uh, you know, by email tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, um. Like we need a motion to adjourn.
More of a question. Uh it's not a planned one. I. Earlier I missed my my vote I on on a motion, but I got distracted by this article on on the first page of the Viking Saga.
Like the. The specific occurrence that uh happened.
Can you repeat? I didn't hear. I didn't understand.
It was an it was an online, there was an online kind of back and forth between Lantern Nation and the Viking Saga. Pictures. Yeah, it got a little ugly. And then there was conversations from our security staff, Mrs. Kelly as well, with Waterford. Um and then it was taken down on Waterford's side. I think I don't want to. Cast judgment on Waterford Deb, but how I knew it and you know differently. It started there. There was comments that were made about Eastline because. Waterford won the basketball game. This is where this originated. Yeah, so um there's that social media piece. Um but uh the students took it down, but it it was out there. And um there was a a couple of hurtful comments um and and pictures.
Because it's an online thing, it's not.
Well, it becomes, yeah, becomes a school issue um in a way, and hence that's where we got involved. Um often times, you know. Things we don't know about, but the things we do find out about, uh we have to investigate. We have to take part in, uh yep, and identify. We involve what happened and taking it from there. So I don't know if there was a fin- a final outcome with that, Deb. I didn't I didn't necessarily.
And decided just decided to. I use the opportunity to talk about, you know, what what is uh the rivalry versus what. Who is the third basketball game against?
Yeah.
First only loss.
Yeah.
About me all the same is I appreciate the Viking saga. I hope I hope there's a positive message at the end of it. I I hope we don't have these kind of.
Agreed, yeah. And uh yeah, of course, the kids for, you know, identifying something, talking about it in, you know, a uh the newspaper the way they did. That's great. Thanks, Tim.
Well, I think the important point is less than learns, you know.
Oh, there's no order for deliberations now? Okay, so there's no order for.
For doing it all together.
I don't know. When is the board, is the board term meeting in before we do our rollout? And we we kind of talked about a lot of things. Are we, can we do that in our next meeting, or should we update them on? Possible things that we're considering doing on rolling out our survey, or do we want to wait? I don't know, I'm just.
You you don't have another board meeting, because we've got the public hearing. You've got April, April break, public hearing on the twenty.
Are we on our own to roll this survey out? I I don't, I'm just. Maybe if you come back, maybe on the night of the public's hearing, if we needed a. Specifically that meeting. Good, it's here. I don't, I don't know.
Be to communicate our our launch plan in the weekly update for folks to review. And then my thought was that we would bring that plan to triple A. On first, I wasn't, but I'm happy to do.
No, no, I didn't. I just didn't. You know, I don't know. I kind of feel like.
We've been working on this.
We've been working on it. I just don't want someone to be surprised and say, oh, I didn't know we were doing this or that.
Well, I've been including some updates in the week in the weekly rate as we progress. So um just trying to keep people abreast of what. The progress we've been making. So I think after our meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
We'll be in a much better place to sort of uh launch the comprehensive.
Okay. Yeah, 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 okay.
And then I do think at some point we should. Dem like do a whole board presentation with some of the district-wide data and the plan that we developed, but I think that's to come.
Perfect.
And we will need your help to to get the word out. So we'll we'll ask for your support in that way when time comes.
So we will meet before we actually send out the first.
The board does not meet in again in April.
And their surveys going out. And our surveys going out.
April twenty, the week of April twenty-second.
Okay.
But I can include information on a.
Triple A between now and the twenty-second?
I honestly have not looked that far out.
I don't know if you guys sort out. If you need one. No, no, I just, I I I can't remember what we communicated so far.
I've just been putting in the weekly update, you know, if if the committee meets, what we met on, what our decision was, so um. You know, I I know that I've just been, that's, that's, that's the extent of a update. And and then, you know, we had our last triple A committee meeting where we decided to. Look for a vendor, and that's sort of where we left it, so.
Yes, look to, look at some dates and look through.
Okay.
Okay, uh motion to adjourn.
I'll go quick, the tour that we did last week, I thought really had a big impact. Uh on the Board of Finance, so I'd like to say thank you to all the administration staff that was involved, I think it was. I think you'd have a chance to see what they were paying for, or we were being taxed, so. I just thought it was a, it really made a difference, I think, when I went to the next, I've been to some interesting Board of Finance meetings, and this seemed to go. Extremely well in my. I think you're agreeing with me. Doesn't mean they won't cut us.
They will, they have to do their, they're in a tough situat- they have a tough, I mean, it's a big number right now, and so.
It's what it is to run a school system, but.
Oh, I meant collectively for the town. Okay, cause we we still have our. So what second? Uh all those are. So we're staying here.